All right, we're going to call the work session to order for October 17th, 2017. And school board members, we've been asked if we would speak directly into the microphone so it can be picked up by our audience who hopefully will be watching this work session presentation. Thank you very much, Dr. Parrish.
Yeah.
Can we talk about school consolidation?
I will. I'm back again this evening to provide you information about school consolidation. What you see here is much like what I did at the last meeting, is a list of the different items that I'm going to be talking about or information that I'm going to be providing you. So the, most of these are from questions that you generated at the last meeting and then I had somebody, I think, called me in between with one. Also, we did have a community member that suggested another scenario, so we have worked that scenario up as well for you here. And then we talked about the fact that we wanted to see the capital costs for the different consolidation scenarios, which I have for you this evening. So I will walk through all of this with you now. The first thing that I have for you here, and this came from a question at the last board meeting, was looking at how many schools have the different configurations, some of which we've talked about, and looking at the different scenarios. So you see here on the far left corner, the grade spans. So we'll just use the first one as an example, pre-K through 2, which is a grade span that we have. The number of school divisions that have that, 16, and the number of schools across the state that have that configuration are 23. So I'm not going to read through every one of these, but you can get a sense of numbers of schools that have them. So some of the ones that we are looking at, for example, 3 through 8, there is, there's only one school that has that exact configuration. So we also know that, for example, because we weren't looking at K through 8, we haven't put pre-K or K through 8 on our listing here. So I just wanted you to get this information to you. There are over 1,000, actually over 1,800 schools in Virginia, so this doesn't total that because we haven't put in schools configurations that we haven't talked about at all when looking at the different scenarios. So I think this gives you a general idea of numbers, as you said, of the configurations that we have. So certainly you'll have this data too to look at. I figure you don't necessarily need me to read a chart for you. And for community members watching, we're rerunning this too, so you'll be able to look at this again. Any questions on that one before I move?
Was that a, I'm sorry, I can't really read the bottom. How many school divisions?
132 school divisions in Virginia, and there are 1,855 schools.
Okay, so the 8 through 12, 19 school divisions?
Have it, and 26 schools.
I can't read the heading, so...
Yeah, no, no, oh, sorry. Yeah, it does look better when they watch it at home, but yes. So yeah, 19 school divisions and 26 schools. So there are school divisions that would have probably more than one building that has 8 through 12.
Dr. Parrish, are we going to get a handout?
Yes, oh, yes, actually, we have them right there that we will pass them along. Sorry about that. Thank you. Glad you asked.
Dr. Parrish, it looks like the winner of configurations is 720, pre-K to 5?
Yeah, that's a very typical configuration for elementary school.
That's a large spread.
Yeah, so you can see that as a large number. Yeah. And then you see a large number for 9 through 12, which is what we currently have for high school, but yes, pre-K through 5 is very typical. Yeah, this will help you because you'll be able to read it better on yours. Sorry, I didn't realize we hadn't passed those out.
Dr. Parrish, real quick, and you might be answering this later on, I apologize. Do we know yet of these schools with those high numbers, like the pre-K through 5 and the 6 through 8, do we know yet how many of those schools were constructed specifically with those mixed grades in mind?
Yeah, I'll be honest, this would be just so hard to track that I don't know that we could really get that data, especially, that's a great example, 721 schools. I mean, I can say because pre-K through 5 is such a typical thing, that I'm sure those buildings were constructed that way. I mean, we could call the 38 school, because that's one school, to see if they were constructed that way that's in that, or the 47. Those might be easier for us, but when there's large numbers, it would be a tremendous amount of staff work. If you want me to have staff call, you know, we'll do that, but, you know, any building that's newer will, you know, I did talk to a superintendent of an 812, or former superintendent of an 812 school. The building hadn't been designed that way when they moved the students in, but they were able to match the programs with it. So I would say your more typical answer, building not designed unless they, you know, they added something to the building. But for example, in our neighboring school division, the K8 schools were designed specifically for that. But we can call the, maybe the Singleton 37 and the 47s and see, that would give you some sense for ones that are a little similar to what we're looking at. But pre-K through 5, I'd say safe that those were probably built that way. All right, next, we got a question about the status of sort of development in Procosin. So what I did is worked with the city manager, and he worked with his staff to provide us this information that I'm going to walk you through. So currently, these are the approved developments. Now, I don't have the development that Victory Cove that's been completed, all the homes are built, so I'm including here ones that are not fully built or even, in some cases, not started. So Drake's Landing, I believe that's off of Hunts Neck Road, is a 10-lot, single-family subdivision. They've had one lot sold, and the building is in progress, but they've gotten no other request for permits or construction. So eventually, there could be 10 single-family homes in there, but there's no movement on nine of those. And so at this point, we have no students to date. Do know that if you're building a house in Procosin, you have a contract that shows us that, you can enroll your stu-, you may enroll your student in the school division. So if this family we're building has started, had wanted to enroll their child, if they have one, they could, they could do so. So I don't want you to go, "Well, of course, there's no students because there's nobody living there," but they could have enrolled if they did. So the Fountains of Procosin, that's the apartments that you see in the, with retail underneath over by the Food Lion Shopping Center. So we've, they've done Phase 1, which includes eight apartments and three retail units. They are expecting Phase 2 to be done, which will be two buildings exactly like the building that is there, and they're looking for that to start in early 2018. Out of the current eight apartments that are there, we have one student enrolled, so. And they are, as part of that, looking at potentially doing an additional 20 townhome units, but no site plan has been received or approved by the city, so if that's to occur, it's probably a ways off. So that's that one. White House Cove Marina, which probably you all know, but in case not, the, down by Surf Rider, down off of Renz Road, where we, they currently have 55 units, and they're identified as non-traditional residential units. So there were on top of the 55, 12 additional ones to come. Five of those are occupied, so there are seven vacancies right now. But I think what's important to note, out of the ones that are there now, we only have five students. So this is not a development that is producing a big increase in student enrollment, so even if the next, when the next seven come online, I'm not sure that we would get students. We might, but it's not a heavy area for students. The Village Park Townhomes, so as you're driving on With Creek Road, heading away from, you know, Farm Fresh, going towards, towards the way you would go to get to White House Cove, there's 26 townhome units with building in progress on those. So there's 18 units that have been started. Eight of them have current certificates of occupancy issued, and we have four students. So we've gotten four students out of those. It could be that they're out of the ones that are occupied, but also if somebody's got a contract on one, we might have students already enrolled from there. So we would anticipate, I would say, getting some more students as those townhouses are continue to be built. The next one is, and I'm not sure if I'm pronouncing it right, Rubus Run Townhomes. These are the ones over behind the Car Wash that are getting built. So they're anticipating 24 townhomes there. Six units have been started. We have no students to date out of that. Doesn't mean that won't change, but with the six started, we don't have any students right now. Yeah, got it. Thank you. Oh. All right. Thank you, folks. So these are projected developments. So here's the difference between the approved, because these are not yet under construction. I don't need to spend a lot of time with the legacy because certainly you've heard about this, but again, I have shown you what is anticipated to come. This could, I'm sure, could change. It's, the phased development is expected to begin in 2018, 2019, but I don't know that we know yet if that actually will happen, but that's, the city has as the expectation. Again, the developer has projected 198 students, based on the work they've done for planning. They are the ones that we're getting the number from. There's, there's no other way for us to capture that, so that, I'm sure, could be up or down depending on what actually happens there, but that's the number that we use for that. With Creek Estates is a 19-lot, single-family subdivision. I believe that's down as you're heading towards Hampton, off of With Creek, and a plan has not been resubmitted, so I guess they submitted something and need to resubmit a plan, and we don't have any student projections, projections at all for that. So this, this one, it could take years before this gets off the ground, just because it's very early, I guess, in the planning phase, but I wanted you aware of it since I was made aware of the fact that we could have 19 homes there. So those are all of the housing developments that, at this point, the city was able to provide me information for. So now let's talk about September 30 enrollment. So I remember at the last meeting, I said that I would get this to you now, because the last meeting was before September 30th. So what you see here, we've done it by the year, and on the far right-hand bottom corner, you see 2017, that we have 2,139 students. This does include preschool. Realize that preschool does not count for average daily membership, which gets us funding from the state, but it is our actual enrollment. Now, what's nice is you see 2006 is right next to it, so you can compare the difference between our highest enrollment to date and this year. So there now is a difference of 463 students. This is the first year since I've been here, a reason to celebrate, that we've had an increase in enrollment and not a drop in enrollment. So you can see that increase from September 30 of 2016, just above. Remember that we did pick up some students between September and January, so in terms of our budgeted increase, it wasn't, we didn't, we were already budgeting a little bit ahead because we had more students when we did the budgeting. So the increase for the purpose of the budget isn't as great as the increase from September 30 to September 30 of this year, if that makes sense. But still, it certainly is nice to stand in front of you and say enrollment has increased, and it only took nine years for that to happen. Not that I'm counting. Let's talk a little bit about the Weldon Cooper Center. So I talked with you all about asking them to do a 10-year enrollment projection, which is what they've done. They did let me know that when you could do a further out enrollment projection, there is a greater margin for error, things could change, so they wanted me to know that. I did provide them with all the development information in addition to our numbers. Now, at the time, we didn't have September 30 numbers, so know that they used the numbers we had and the date that I sent this to them, which was about a week, I think, previous to that. But what you see here, from 2017 to 18, to 2027, 28, is you see an increase of students. And if you look on the far right corner, you see 461 students. So that's what they are with this projection, knowing that 10 years, you know, things could definitely change. They're showing that we would have an uptick and be almost at where we were in 2006 when we had our highest enrollment.
Question.
Yes.
With this, are they taking into account the legacy?
Yeah, he, when I talked with him about it, he said if the legacy comes online, he definitely sees that we'll get back to that, to that 26 enrollment. So I think that they have kept it in mind here. I'm not sure if they use the concrete 198, but he did say, he said too, that what he thinks we're seeing now, because we've seen this uptick this year, and it's not all from the new homes, because that's been that much, is that we're seeing families who, children's probably, children graduated and left the home, they stayed in their houses through the recession, and they're now more comfortable, and they may be selling those houses, and we may see some turnover now for families that have children. So if the economy continues as it is, and that continues, he said, "We're definitely going to continue to see that uptick," and then you have the developments starting to come online as well. So again, I'm not going to go through every line here, but what you can see is he shows you, I'm going to show you a graph that actually sort of helps see this bottom line better, but you can see where, which grades they're projecting to see those increases in throughout the years. So this was important information for us, obviously. So let me break this down. I think this graph shows this quite well. The blue is where we are now. So when you see the white boxes at the far right end, that's where they're projecting we'll be with students in 2027, 2028. And what you notice is, you'll see that those classes, and by class, I mean a whole grade, the classes in middle school through high school, other than 12th grade, tend to pick up a lot, and they're always much bigger. So while the, the lower grades, the K through 5 grades see pickup, then those class sizes are never as big as the upper grades. And I do think that part of that is because families just can, can afford probably more easily in some ways to get in here when their kids are a little bit older. And historically, before we saw the decline, this is what it would look like too, that you'd start to see that pickup at the middle and high school level. So as we've had that enrollment loss, it's now started to hit the middle and the high school level because we never got the pickup, we haven't gotten the pickup over the years. So I just thought that was another good way to look at the increase and where they're predicting that increase will be in the next 10 years. Another graph here, keeping in mind the scale on the far left is, you know, 500 to 3,000 students, so you're not, it's not looking as a big dip as it would if you used a different scale on the, on the left side of the graph. But this does show you the decrease we've experienced, and then the increase that they're projecting, projecting that we'll experience in 10 years. So you see in a line graph that it's reaching up to, you know, the, the number of which we were in 2006. So another way to look at it.
Can I ask you a question about the key, Dr. Parrish?
Sure.
What is the blue?
The blue is projected enrollment, and the orange is actual enrollment we've experienced.
Okay, thank you.
Mm-hmm. And I have to comment, because somebody else commented to me, "It's orange and blue," because Weldon Cooper Centers affiliated with UVA. I did not request the orange and blue.
PowerPoint doesn't match.
But it was nice. That's former Wahoo. All right, let's talk about school capacity for a minute, and I'm going to apologize to you and community members because I, my sense is, I don't think I've done as good a job explaining this as I could have to you. So I want to walk through this because we've gotten questions about this from a community member that I think will help more too, as we look at capital costs. The first one question that we did receive from a community member is, what number, student number, are we using? So we are using the numbers that are given to us from, by the Virginia Standards of Quality. The numbers of students that we, according to the Virginia Standards of Quality, should have in classes, and it varies from grade level, secondary versus elementary. So that, that's the number that we've used, knowing that's what we're required to do by state code. So that's what we've used when we figured, used in terms of the numbers of students we should have for capacity. What's important to note here is the functional capacity is giving us information about students in a school facility, and how, how many more students in the same programs they can have in that facility. So here's a good way to look at this. When we talk about, let's say, the 35 building, so the capacity for the elementary school is, is greater, we can put more students in that particular education program with the curriculum being offered. Because what you're going to see when I get to capital costs is if we're now going to put middle school students at the elementary school, and we have to create space in part because the middle school program is different than the 35 program. They have electives that the 35 students don't have. They have physical education requirements that the K5 students don't have. The schedules run differently than K, than K5 or 35 students do. So we have to understand that just because we could put 100 more students in, when we say in PES, grades 3 through 5, it's those grade levels we know we can put those students in, because we can sort them between the rooms, and the program's not changing. We don't need additional elective classrooms. We don't need an additional gym. They'll fit within that building. So my apologies, because I truly don't believe I've done a good job of explaining that, so I'm hoping this is, is helpful and will help us, especially as we go to look at those capital costs. Now, taken into consideration for this capacity are things like special ed classrooms, gifted programs, electives. I know I mentioned before the fact that with all the SOL online testing, we need to have some hardwired labs in case for any reason wireless were to go down. And also, we do need to realize teacher needs, needs workroom, and we need at least a conference room or two for meetings that need to be held when classrooms are absorbed with students. So this is just a little bit more information and much more specific about school capacity. So now let's look at the updated chart. What we did is, last year when we ran school capacity, ran it off of the functional capacity using the formula that we had used in 2015. So what we did for you now is we took a look back at the programs that we're offering currently in our schools, because things have changed since 2015, and recalculated the functional capacity. So you can see it's adjusted slightly, a little bit up at the primary school in terms of capacity, a little down at the elementary, a little tiny bit down at the middle school, and down at the high school base. So as we've added, for example, electives into the high school, that's impacting your functional capacity, and we've done a bit of that in the last few years. So what you see next to it now is our September enrollment, so now you see the difference between the functional capacity and our enrollment. And again, I say, the functional capacity to put similar programs in the building as it exists now, not if we're moving different instructional programs that come hand-in-hand with different, different levels, grade levels that come. So that is the update on school capacity, how we calculate it, what it means.
Can I have a quick question then? So what it looks like to me is, according to the Weldon Cooper Center, their projections, within 10 years, we will be getting pretty close to what you say is our current functional capacity.
Yes, yes. And we were there, you know, when I came here to, no, in, in 28, 2008 July, we had a couple, at a couple of our buildings, we had learning cottages, as we will call them, outside some of our buildings, because we had the enrollment that needed it, and now we don't have learning cottages outside our buildings anymore because the enrollment's gone so down. So yes, that, so you can see where if we, when we get up, then we have some, if we get really up, we have some issues at the other, the other end of the spectrum. Yeah.
All right, thank you.
Good to know. Okay, so the next one was the suggestion we got from a community member about what we're calling Scenario E, because we've done A through D. And so what this would do is take the middle school out of service, and the configurations would be grades K through 3 at the primary school, and then preschool in grades 4 through 7 at the elementary school, with 8 through 12 at the high school. So you do see that we see savings, again, and this, we're presenting this just as we presented the other scenarios to you. So you can see we'd save the principal, a halftime assistant principal, nurse, and media specialist, clerical, and a PE position. We would have a position cost because we would need to move into the elementary school a part-time school counselor and a part-time art teacher to meet the programmatic needs. We then highlight too, that when you're looking at the maintenance utilities and grounds that we have an accounted for, if you do in addition to a building, there may be some increased costs for those items because your square footage is got, although you're taking something else offline and getting savings, we're just not sure where that breaking point would be. And then the transportation savings for this, which mirrors the other one where it was 8 through 12, that's what's driving this, is a little bit higher than some of the other scenarios as well, at 42,000. So you do see a savings of over $600,000 with this scenario. So as we did before, I'm going to, I'm walking you through the considerations for capital. It's just now at the end of this presentation, I actually have these numbers for you, but I wanted to present this just as I did the other scenarios for you. So you would save the CIP work on the middle school because it would be taken out offline or out of service. You would need an addition at the primary school to increase the capacity, because by adding third grade in, while it's still elementary school programmatically, you've got SOL testings, you have a need for computer labs, and also looking at the fact that now we see this increase in enrollment, which I'm going to talk about the numbers we use for the capital projects, we know we'd have to increase some classroom space too at the primary school. The addition at the elementary school would be needed, again, because you're bringing middle schoolers in, but in this case, you're also bringing preschoolers in. So one example of an issue there is at our primary school, our preschools have bathrooms connected right in the rooms. Same is true for kindergarten as well, so we, we believe we would need to do the work because those are, I mean, we're talking three, three-year-olds, four-year-olds, and a bathroom can be fairly far away for those students, so they're able to get right into those in the classroom. So that's an example too, of something that would need to be impacted if we put preschool at the elementary school. Also with the 8th grade, as in a previous scenario where we had 8 through 12 as part of the scenario, we know that there would likely need to be some CIP projects at the high school, and I'm actually going to talk to you about that when I get to that, that project slide. And additional buses would be needed here, and we do have the cost per bus at 90,000. So again, just as we presented this before, the programmatic advantages, primary teachers would be able to work with third-grade teachers as they strive to meet accountability measures. You'd actually would have an SOL testing grade at the primary school now, which would give the primary school, while they get our elementary data, some actual data in the primary school. Our elementary students could access some middle school math courses right in the building. 5th graders could access maybe some additional electives such as band. 8th graders would be at the high school, they could access some of the courses in math, foreign language, and science, and also could participate in JV sports and other extracurricular activities. I remember at the last presentation, I did tell you, we had like 62 JV slots right now being used by our middle schoolers. And you would see one less transition for students, except for the preschool students. So that takes me to a challenge, because there would be the concern that our very youngest students would actually be the one group that still has another transition, that they would be at the elementary school, and then when they age to kindergarten level, because they can be in the preschool program for a couple of years, then they get moved to the primary school, and then they end up coming back to the elementary school. So we do see that as a programmatic challenge, and we need to keep in mind that half of these students are students with disabilities. So we, we have students who need a lot of support while, while they're there in that preschool program, and as they move into the primary school programs. Working with the master scheduling, with the new grade level at the high school, with the other 8 through 12 scenario, we talked about that. The community adjustment to not having preschool students at the primary school, that would be an adjustment for our communities, as well as having 8th graders at the high school, and then some would struggle with the elementary schools in the facility with up to 7th grade. So all very similar with the change in the preschool though, it's an, it is an added challenge. So here are the operational budget savings. So this is for all five scenarios, so the first four you got at your last meeting. So this shows the operational savings we would project, knowing that the maintenance utilities, grounds insurance savings could change based on the fact that we would have to do additions to buildings, so we just aren't sure what the ultimate savings would be. But this does give you a sense of position savings, if there's a cost to positions, et cetera. So you can see the savings range from 500, just over 512,000 up to over 634,000 in the operating budget on an annual basis. The other question that you asked were about the number of buses required to create savings, because we mentioned that, you know, a new bus is $90,000. So in the different scenarios, the number of buses that we would need are different. Now here's why the difference. When you get up to C and D, where we're looking at shifting, for example, 8th graders, bringing middle school students down with the elementary school, you won't be able to get necessarily three students to a seat. When you have our primary school students, and some of our elementary school students ride buses, they're actually so small that we can have three students to a seat. We don't always have that, sometimes it's two, but when you get into bigger, just physically bigger and older students, you're not going to get three students to a seat, you're going to get two, and there could be the time that you get one, depending on students. So that's why you see more buses needed where you're putting, where you're changing the transition, where you're merging the older ones with the younger ones, versus if you're, you know, just shifting younger ones together, you actually need fewer buses. So I wanted you to understand that. Do know in terms of seating for our buses, we follow all safety regulations, so if three students can fit on a seat, it's safe for them to do so, but if they can't, they need to not be three to a seat, and that's impacting, especially for Scenario D, that's impacting the numbers of buses, because D, you've got 3 through 8 together, so you've now put 6, 7th, and 8th graders with elementary students, and they're going to take up more seat space. Does that make sense? So I just wanted to go back so that you could see, see that one. All right, now for the capital cost. So I've talked about this, but yeah, this is an important slide to really understand, and I will tell you, you know, we're certainly glad that we got this information. So let me walk through with you before we can start looking at each column, how we went about this. What we decided that we needed to do was provide the architect, and realize that the architects that worked with us were the architects that designed the elementary school. So, because most of this was tied to the elementary school, they know that elementary school, they have their plans for that elementary school. But what we did was, we gave them the enrollment scenarios from 2006, because we didn't have, when we gave them this information, we didn't have Weldon Cooper's information yet, and I wanted to get this to you at this meeting. So, but what's interesting is total enrollment for 10 years out is pretty close to that 2006 enrollment. So by us giving them the 2006 numbers, we've, you know, now know, we've pretty much given you the 10-year-out numbers. So the class sizes, by class again, I mean whole grade level, obviously in 2006, were bigger than our current levels, but what I didn't want anybody to say is if we move forward with something, "Well, why didn't you use numbers, you know, that could be the number that you reached in terms of enrollment?" "Oh, gosh, now we have a building that's not big enough for our students," okay? So that's, that's one thing that I want to make sure that you know. Let's walk through now, as we, as I go through each of the scenarios. And remember, I'm going to go back to functional capacity. When we're moving pro, new programs and we're combining them with, with other programs, it's creating the need for specific space to be built for that program. it's creating the need for specific space to be built for that program. So in Scenario A, where we'd be pre-K through four, five through eight, and nine through 12, PPS would, would be taken out of service, so there's no cost to, associated with that. At this point, the PES expansion would be over 8.3 million, which is not out of line with the estimate that they gave us back in 2012, 2013, I think it was around there. So it has, it's increased a bit, because costs have increased since then for construction, but it's not that far off. Now, for the PMS renovation, because if you're keeping the middle school in play, we're assuming we're gonna do something with that building, because it's an aging structure. So as you may remember, that when we had the facility study done, there were five options that were presented to the school board at that time, with option one being immediate repairs, almost like emergency repairs, and that being one, and option five being, you take the entire building down and you build a new, a new middle school. And they had that cost at 27 million. I will tell you, all of these costs have probably risen since 2013, especially, I would imagine, in light of all the construction that will be going on now, because of the hurricanes and fires. So what we thought we would do for the purposes of this is take the median cost. So option three was cost out at 13.9 million, it was labeled modernization. So we thought, just to give a sense of capital cost, let's just go with the medium work that would be done at the building to give you a sense. If you do, if you do decide to consolidate and do something, then we'd have to go back and see what we would do, but we thought that was a fair way to look at this. So, and it was, as I said, called modernization. So for that, you're gonna see, anytime you see PMS renovation, that's why you're seeing the 13.9 million. So then, under option A, you're not touching the high school, because you just got nine through 12, so zero dollars for capital. So option A, combining everything up there, would cost you over 22.3 million. So that's A. Now B is, again, pre-K through five, so you're taking the primary school out of service, but now you're doing a bigger expansion at the elementary school, because you are bringing more students up to include pre-K and kindergarten, which then moves us to the, to the bathroom issue connected to classrooms, because you brought these very young students up to there. And again, because of our estimates and enrollment that we use, we also know we would have to build in space for the increase in enrollment, also bringing additional kids up, additional special ed rooms, that sort of thing would be needed, as well as gifted, rooms for gifted pullout programs. So that's why that's bigger than the 8 million, again, 13.9, additional buses. For this one, it was two buses, and sorry, I didn't say it before, but for A, it was one bus, again, going back to that list I just showed you. So the capital costs for this are over 26 million for B. So for C, there's zero cost for the primary school expansion, because in that one, you're leaving it as a pre-K through two school. At the elementary school, because you're going three, seven, now you're at 22 point, over 22.2 million, because now you're bringing middle school in. So because of our programmatic requirements for middle school, you're gonna have to bring in specialty classrooms, we would actually need another gym, one, so the students would take gyms separately, and because the way we do gym at the middle school level with locker rooms and such, the current gym just would not suffice for that kind of program, as well as additional elective classes would be needed in this scenario, and some other needs at the elementary school. So that's why, at that addition, there is so much larger than the other two. Again, keeping in mind, we gave them enrollment figures for what likely now looks like it could be us in 10 years, but it was us in 2006. Now, here is where you see a PHS renovation. Remember I said that we were gonna try and give you some estimate? This is an estimate, a true estimate. What occurred between our last meeting and this meeting is, we actually had our administrators and Dr. Fox try and run a mock schedule, let's pretend our eighth graders are sitting in the high school now, so what would that mean for the facility? And so by doing that, it was clear that we would need some kind of auxiliary gym, because eighth graders have to take PE, and there's not enough give and take in that gym that they, that they can do that, and we have to offer ninth and 10th grade PE, and we do offer other classes for juniors and seniors in physical education. So that's, that's a cost that's wrapped up into this 6 million. It wouldn't be a competitive gym, a competition gym, we don't need the bleachers and all of that, but we need a gym that students could use to have class in. So we were able to talk to a couple of local divisions that have recently, fairly recently done this, and they were able to give us their cost for such a thing, so we got that. In addition to that, because of the nature of the middle school program, and looking to do some separation, we would need some additional classrooms to be built. So that brings the total to the PHS renovation, we think, of about 6 million. So again, this was not run by the architect, we did this ourselves, but what we were able to do is estimate classroom costs based on what the architect was providing us for classroom per square foot for classroom at the elementary school. So we think this is relatively close, I just want you to know, we didn't ask the architect to do the high school, because they don't have any experience with our high school.
I have a question. As far as auxiliary gym, would that also meet the requirements for the auditorium issues that we have?
No, in, in this scenario, we're not actually doing, we're not touching the auditorium. If we were to do an auditorium on top of this at, at the high school, that would be another additional cost, probably in the millions, so. So what you also see here is the additional buses, so that would be, the three buses were needed for this scenario, so that's another one-time cost, capital cost of 270,000. So for this scenario, we're at over 28.5 million on this one. So option D, pre-K through two, so that building would not be untouched, because we're not changing the programming there. Three through eight would be the elementary school, so you've increased, you put more middle school actually at the elementary school now, so that does increase that cost up to 27, over 27.2 million, because you've moved a whole nother grade of kids in, and again, we need to make sure that we can adjust, address their needs programmatically. The middle school would be out of service, no cost there, we're not touching the high school now, because we're leaving it 912. We did, this is where we needed the most buses, I believe it's five buses, and so that's a cost of 450,000, and that would result in a total projected CIP cost of over 27.7 million for option D. So option E, the one I provided with you tonight, you would now need to touch the primary school. So this is the only scenario in which you would have to touch the primary school, and looking at programmatically what we would need to do, one, we have to deal with computer rooms, some of the specialty programs, because we need additional special education room, and then, again, using those higher enrollment numbers, that means we'd have an expansion cost of 3.9 million. I will tell you, the other question mark here is, those of you that have had children go through the primary school, there's not a lot of space around the primary school. So in order to do this, it might be that we'd have to eliminate a playground, or go up somehow, which would mean these trail, those students would have to move into trailers, while we did the work there. I don't think you could go out really into the parking lot unless you took away the grass up front and made that parking lot, but that's even used by folks for community rec purposes. So what we just costed here is if you put an addition on the building, we got a little help from the architect, because it, you know, it ties into elementary needs, but we did not go into gross detail to figure out exactly if we did this, how we could put an addition on, on that building, because that, I think that would be a big question. So your elementary school expansion now is a little bit less, because you've moved third grade out, and you just have seven, you don't have eight in this scenario, but you are bringing pre-K up, so we need to do a little bit of work for pre-K. So the expansion cost at the elementary school is 13 million, it's still higher than A and B, especially because of some of the programmatic issues, but it is less than it would be in C and D. Your middle school would be out of service in this scenario, and again, because you're moving eighth grade up, we're projecting the same cost at the high school for that. And then you see the bus cost here would be, then again, the two buses, 180, that's 180,000, so your total's over 23.5 million. One thing, too, I know that we, we got this comment at one point, is, you know, we could move to one of these, maybe even E next year. Because we have the programmatic issues and space issues, we couldn't just suddenly close a school for next year and move, start shifting kids around, because we have to do work on buildings to make this work and be the right thing for our students. So I just want you to, to know why, if you were to determine you wanted to consolidate, we would need the time to make the adjustments to the building, so we could do this right by our students, and make sure that we do what we need to do to address what we hope is the increase in enrollment. I did put a bottom note on the slide, so it probably is hard to read at home, so I'm gonna read it aloud, and then explain a little bit more about it. So the note says that city council was informed by Davenport, that they could borrow up to 23 million and be within the debt guidelines of the city. So Davenport is the financial advise, advisors, the company is, for, for the city in terms of making, you know, financial planning decisions. And so they were at a council meeting in September, where they presented a full report to council members, which outlines, you know, what they could do in terms of financing or acquiring more debt and stay within those debt guidelines. It did talk a little bit about bond ratings, too, obviously that can change, but the city would like to maintain their excellent bond ratings that they have. And they provided information to the city about if you were to go to the full 23 million, you know, you could, if you did it all at once, this is what it would mean, if you took some of the money at one point and some at another time, this is what it would mean. So it was a very thorough presentation. Additionally, last week, city council had a work session about their CIP, of which I attended and spoke briefly with them. They did ask me to do an update on where we were in our process, and also wanted me to speak to a couple of the high priority items on the CIP, so, and they're in the nearer term on, on the CIP that we, that we most recently approved, and that is the two roof projects. We have one at the primary school, and one at the high school. I believe the primary school roof is 29 years old, and at the time of which, it's on the CIP, and I think the high school roof is 24 years old at the time, so as I say to the community, we put new roofs on our houses at some point in time, it needs to happen on our schools as well. So I spoke about that, and then other department heads for the city spoke, for example, you know, fire truck needed, equipment for public works that's needed, and then the potential for a public safety build, a new public safety building that police and then, I believe, fire folks would use that building, too. So, because the conversation was somewhat, okay, what are our CIP needs beyond what the schools might need if they were to consolidate or not consolidate and decide to, to work on the middle school? So if they were to choose one of those, what money, beyond whatever amount of money that they needed for their project, could we use for other CIP issues? So the thinking is, within the 23 million guideline, how many projects can we get done in the city if we go to borrow that kind of, you know, to go to borrow that kind of funding or, or that kind of debt? So I wanted to make sure that you, as board members, understood that, but also that anybody watching the presentation this evening did, and I know that city council meetings are also recorded and on, on the city website, if anybody wants to go see either the, the conversation at the work session or the conversation, the presentation that Davenport made at the prior meeting to that during a regular city council meeting. So important to note, especially when you see the projected CIP costs, if we were to consolidate in any one of these areas. That is the conclusion of my report. I will get to you, call in a couple of those schools to get a sense of where buildings plan that way or not, so that's one question to answer for you. I don't know if you have other questions of this presentation, or any additional information requests that we can get to you.
Dr. Parrish, I have a question. So I just want to make sure I understand, the 23 million, that includes whatever we can do with the schools, as well as what the city is proposing to do over the next 20?
Yeah, I don't know whether, I think they would do the activity short of the 20 years, the debt may roll out over 20 years, or it may roll out shorter than that. I don't know exactly when those projects would be done, I'd have to get, I think they're looking to see if they can do some of those projects, you know, sooner rather than later. I'm looking back at TARA, because the debt may roll out over 20 years, but the, the projects may be done sooner than that. Like, we're still paying debt for the elementary school that was built and opened in 28, 2008.
Right, but I, you know, looking at any of the scenarios, obviously, they're over 20 million.
Yes.
So if we were to say, any of those scenarios, that leaves a million or less for the city to do anything, so.
Correct.
Do they have high priority things that, because looking at it, I mean, I don't see how we can really do anything at this point.
So to answer your question, yes, you can see here that really only one of the scenarios falls under 23 million. What the city has asked, I believe, department, what city council has asked departments to do is to prioritize, like, their top two CIP projects, and to bring that to them at their meeting on Monday. So our, what we're putting as the top project is, whether it's consolidation or the middle school, some major school project, but we don't have a dollar amount for it, but if we don't consolidate, we know we have the middle school that needs something done, and then one of the roofing projects. So those are two projects that we're putting in, but they know we don't have a dollar amount yet for whatever the school project is. Again, because if you, we don't consolidate and we do the middle school, then we have to decide what we would do with the middle school, which would have some cost between four and 27 million.
Well, can I ask, kind of the process, well, are we gonna make the decision first about consolidation, and then go back and see, because if it's over the 23 million, just say that this has high priority items as well? I know that anything over 23 million has to go to bottom referendum.
Yeah.
Kind of hard for us to decide without knowing what they need to do.
Yeah, they understand that you're going through your process. So what I believe they're anticipating is, you'll make a decision about what you're gonna do, are you gonna consolidate, and as part of that decision, if you are, which option you're picking, because remember, we had to change our process slightly, because if, if you're gonna go forward with a consolidation recommendation, you have to have a public hearing. So in a public hearing, you really need to be able to tell people, we're gonna, we want to consolidate, this is how we want to do it, we can't just say we're gonna consolidate and not say how we're gonna do it. So I think they're looking to see what, what we're gonna do with that before they, or if that's not the case, if you're not, we're not consolidating, we're gonna do work on the middle school, what, what might we be coming to them for as an option for work on the middle school, before they finalize what they're gonna do with their CIP? But they're trying to gather information now, as we work, as to what are the high priorities, so they get a sense of what would their total be if every city department, I guess, had two priorities, and they totaled all that funding together, and then totaled ours in it. But you see, you see, you're seeing what, why that note below is so important, is we have to understand what the city can do, I think we've got to understand that and be responsible to that. That's why I wanted to get that information to you tonight, as part of all of this, so you have that, because I think it's gonna help you decision, I think knowing that will help you.
My only concern is that if we decide any of these options, then we go back, and city's like, well, you know, we need to do 10 million worth of upgrades to something else, and then we've made this decision to consolidate, and we don't have, don't have the money, we can't do everything, the city plus the school. So I kind of feel like we're moving forward, yet we're not really sure what city's going to do, or if the city can afford what we need to do.
Yeah, and I think, I would say to you, and then, I mean, I'll turn it back to you, I think you have to, as you make this decision, knowing what we know about the debt issue, I think you've got to keep that in your mind as you make the decision. I mean, that's why I wanted to get this information to you, it may impact your decision, and certainly, I will say, numbers here were higher than I anticipated for some of this, but then realizing, when, when we're looking at the enrollment that I now anticipate we're likely to get to, we hope, in 10 years, that's impacting this, too. So I just want you to know that, that, you know, I didn't think I'd be standing here and talking about additions of 22 million, 27 million, 13 million even, but, you know, I'm really glad we did what we did, because these are good estimates, and you have it, and you also know, you know, you know where the city is. The city's just trying to continue to move with you, because their hope is to actually finally fund a CIP. We haven't really had a funded CIP, and now they've got some ability to do something here, so.
The only other question I have, and I promise I'll let other board members speak, is just, in the 10-year period, let's just say we decide any of these choices, then we've got 500 more students, then do we have to, let's say if we took the middle school out, there are 10 years from now, are we gonna be looking at, well, now we need to build a school? So I'm just curious about that 10-year, where, since we'll be back to, what, 2006 enrollment projections, you know, what do we do then? Or have we put ourselves in a hole, and then we have to go back and reevaluate this whole process again? Would we need another school to accommodate those extra 500 kids that they're projecting in 2020?
Essentially, another expansion of a school, or.
Right, right.
Or learning cottages?
Well, I mean, if you take the middle school out, and you put on a 13 to $13 addition to the elementary school, and then you had, I believe at the chart, it was like sixth through 11th grade was where the bulk of the students were, well, then we've taken them out, we have to go and build another school. Well, then, we've taken that out, we have to go and build another school. So, I'm just curious, I want to make sure, whatever decision the board makes, that we're not looking back 10 years from now, kicking ourselves saying, oh, now we're going to spend 20, 30, 40 million to build another school.
I think that's why it's important that you have all this data so you can take it into consideration as you talk about it. That's, I mean, you're right. That, and that's why I think it's important that we got the 10-year projection, even though there's a margin of error in it. And it is the first year we've seen an increase in enrollment, so, but I think you've got to take all that into consideration.
I understand Jennifer's point that a lot of that, or most of it, was built into these projections, correct? You're talking about beyond that date after 10 years.
Right.
Would it be possible, I should have this information, but I can't put my fingers on it, would it be possible to get back the estimates for the different middle school renovations?
Absolutely.
Just to have that in front of us?
But I can.
Oh, they are here?
Here it is.
Oh, I'm sorry, okay, yeah.
They, I did, I gave you a real, like a two-sentence summary.
Okay.
But, you know, we can get the full package out to you. There's a whole book for it, but we can get, we can get that to you.
Yeah, thank you.
Are there, before, I know you need to talk, I guess, while I'm standing up here. Is there any other information or do you need me to, well, I can stand in case you need me to go back to slides. Then, I'll come back to it. I'm good.
Bring your chair.
No, I'm good, I can stand, it feels good. I've been doing a lot of sitting today, thank you. Part of our wellness program.
Love to hear everybody's input presented tonight. I mean, I, my mouth just kept dropping open. Not, I think what we expected, so I'd love.
You know, I, you and I have been on the school board for five years and I don't, I can't speak for you, but for me, those five years went by so fast. So, to know that we're talking just 10 years out, maybe moment that's pretty close to our highest, that's going to come quick. It seems like 10 years is a long time, but it really isn't. So, that means affecting some of our kids are currently kindergartners if they stay in school in Pecosin, and we hope that they do. So, I don't know that I really had a point with that comment. What, just seems longer? Oh, for me or you?
I think that's.
Just wild numbers. I think the, the highest number to just destroy the middle school and rebuild it right was about 20 something million dollars, right? Low twenties?
It's 27 million, what they projected when they did the study in 2013, so likely, I think that cost would go up a bit.
Thirty, thirty million.
Yeah.
But there were a number of different options.
Right.
About adding elevators, doing, you know, pass-throughs, you know, different improvement things that are far less than a 27 or 30 million dollar brand-new building.
That would fix systems too, like to HVAC and plumbing and electrical. Those are included in some of those lower on the tier options, for lack of a better way to put it.
One of the things you mentioned were items that were already on the CIP. Are you, what was the total for those items? Do you remember?
The, the roof, the first round of the roof, the primary school was over 800,000. And then, I think to do the metal, that was to do sort of the middle to the back. And then, there's metal roofing over that cafeteria and the gym. And that was a couple of years out and that number, I don't have off the top of my head. But at the, at the high school, the, to do, the bulk of the roof was 1.2, I think about 1.2 million. Then, there's a small part on the back where it looks like it's a foyer and entryway, if you've been in the building, that's, I think that's metal or different. So, that needed to be done. I think that was like 30,000, it was a smaller. So, really, both projects are around that 1 to 1.2 million dollar range.
Are those already funded in the CIP as approved or they have to come out of the 23 million?
They, they would have to, yeah. They're in the CIP and the CIP has been approved project-wise in past years, but no money's been approved for it. So, yes.
Out.
Yes, it would be in consideration for that.
Yes, oh, yeah, yeah. Well, let's talk a lot. The first two, A and B, capital costs, use, we're using, just keep in mind, we're using that mid-range number 13.9 for the middle school. Projectively, I don't think that gets us there. After I walked that building the other night, I don't think it's, it needs to go. I, I just don't know how to make that work. And there's so many issues there. So, on these first two, we're at 22.3 and 26.1, but I think we're probably low, lowball on the middle school. What we have to do to make it really work well.
Wayne, I missed that last statement. What did you?
I just, we're total, scenario A and B, there are 22 million and 26 million there in B. I just think we're lowballing the middle school solution. That, that's just subjective. I just walked in, went, yeah, ooh, ow, ooh, you know, it just, it just looks like it needs to be a start over. That night, I said to myself as I walked to my car, okay, I know what I want to do. Make us go away, make it better. And that, I knew it was the highest, you know, commitment monetarily in the, for the, for the city, but I thought this has to happen. It just.
But if you look at what you're spending on three schools and you're now impacting three schools, it seems like the easiest solution would to try to just take care of one. I mean, again, 27 or maybe even 30 million, that's a lot of money. And again, if the city can, right now, only borrow up to 23 million, it's still going to go to bond referendum. But to me, it seems like it would be easier to take care of one school, one school's impacted because you're, it looks like you're going to be spending 20 something million anyway.
Yeah.
And I agree with you, I think 13.9, I mean, I mean, it's only scratching the surface of what really needs to be done because you're pushing, kicking down the road for future.
Guess I'm a can kicker then because I, I, I see some, I still see potential for the, I, I don't think it needs to be raised and a brand-new building. But, you know, that's, that's me.
If it helps the discussion, the, the mid-range, the 13.9 addresses the, the options where just making sure further deterioration doesn't happen. But all aspects of the building to include replacing finishes, replacing building systems, windows, the front entrance, the surround, the redesign, the gym access, update auditorium, renovate media center, provide new HVAC systems and new plumbing upgrades and water heaters and locker rooms. So, a lot of the issues that we did talk about, I probably included in there. I do agree, 13.9, it's not 13.9 today, it's probably 15 or 16.
That's true also, yeah.
And there's, with that option three, which is a mid-range, there's an additional add-on of a 5.6 if you do a lot of the other things, including auditorium and other things that are more community needs for that. So, then you're approaching the 20.
Twenty something.
21, 22 million, but.
Chairman Cass, where were you looking at that? So, I can.
This is from previous, the notebook she gave us last time.
Page number?
Number eight.
Page eight.
Thank you. And those are significant repairs and upgrades.
I mean, the HVAC and plumbing and all that, I think, was the genesis of the things that we looked at when we toured and besides the underground dungeon system.
Yeah.
Well, and, and the, the electrical work and classrooms, bringing them up.
That's in there, right?
And that's in here. It is in here. That's part of option 2A, I believe.
Well, in the moderate, I say the option 3A, was that to include the option to address the auditorium and the locker room?
I believe, yeah, I think 3A included the, getting a different auditorium and then, I think, producing new locker rooms, I think. It was, that one was the one that, as Chairman Cass had sort of brought in the, some of those community pieces in. Because four, it, you know, so 3 through 3A was to do all that. Four was you would take down the old building and build, build the older building, build a new building there, but keep the newer wing. Mind you, it was like built in the 1950s or whatever. And then, six, five was to tear the whole thing down and start. So, you can see where that sort of three is sort of to take care of it without tearing a building down. But 3A would, you would take some structures down. Know that that cost did include, keep in mind, putting students, I'll go back again, in learning cottages for a year as the work is done on the building because you, this kind of work, we'd have to move students out.
Can you tell me what areas of the building would be subject to be flood problem?
Well, I can speak to Isabel. So, the tech ed room that you, we went into on the tour, that one was flooded, the gym was flooded and the auditorium was, and then those spaces underneath the building were. And some of those lower, where some of the electrical work too was done. Mr. Papas, am I, have I hit the areas?
Because I live right near the middle school and I've had water in my house seven times since 2002. So, I think it's something, living on the coast is something we're going to have to consider. And I would hate to do all this work and then still have to worry about it being flooded.
I think within one of the first three options was doing, working with that tech ed room to get it up. And then, you could certainly, if you did a new auditorium or did something major with the auditorium, you could get it up.
I didn't realize it flooded in Pecosin, but.
Shocking.
Look, I want to say that we are, the decision we're trying to get to is still whether we are going to consolidate or not. But given the numbers that we've been presented tonight, this is a very pertinent discussion. So, I don't want any confusion that we have jumped and have made a decision and we're talking about, we're going to renovate the middle school. We are actually considering by this discussion about the consolidation decision. So, I just wanted to state that for the public. And Ms. Helsel, anything shocked? Ms. Shee.
My concern is that we're, we're looking at a 10-year enrollment projection, which doesn't, does take into considerations a legacy project and maybe some of the other developments. I'm thinking that we're being very optimistic that we're going to get up to 2006 numbers. So, this is not a guarantee that we're going to be there. If we did use any of our, the possible scenarios, we are building those numbers in. But we're not necessarily going to get there. We have, we have many more, many years of showing a decline and only one bump this year, which we're really happy about showing it, an increase. Not sure, coming from a real estate background, I'm, you know, we're nothing but optimistic, but sometimes it doesn't work out quite the way the numbers seem to act when we're at our most optimistic. And, and having, and having walked the middle school, I really feel that the amount of money that we need to spend there to bring us up to ADA compliance and a safe buil, building that doesn't split apart and all the other flooding issues is going to be much in excess of the 13.9 that's, that's here. I think that's, that's just a given.
Well, do you know the ADA compliance issues are wrapped up into the 13.9? So, that includes with the current, building as it stands now, two elevators.
Excellent, okay.
Yeah, do you know that some of that is because the minute we do any work on it, then we're not grandfathered anymore and we have to make those changes.
Ah, okay. All right. So, we open Pandora's box and we fix that. Yes, that's good.
Yeah.
That makes me happy, yes.
It seems to me i- if we believe the projections for 10 years down the road, we could spend about 20 million and make the middle school right. Or if we don't believe it, we can spend about 20 million and consolidate. So, I, I thought these numbers tonight would be different. I know, I know 3 million is 3 million, that's not nothing, but I thought they'd be a little more, more money options. This is more, this makes the decision to me more, more qualitative than quantitative. It's a lot of money, all of them are a big deal. Where it seemed like with our middle school options, we had some, it was just one school granted, it was, we had some ways to kind of play with it. This, this slide, I'm thinking, wow, it's just 20 million dollars, 30 million dollars wherever you look at it, you know? And I do think the first two are undervalued significantly. That's just my, that's just my opinion.
The first two options?
Middle school, I think it's just going to take more than that to get where we need to go, unless we're just going to Band-Aid it again, which we've been doing for a long time, actually generations. Am I sure it's working so well again?
Well, often when you start.
Right.
Once you start that kind of work, something else comes up. So, you do have to factor in, you know, a little bit of wiggle room.
Yeah.
On that cost. So, and those numbers were from a while ago, I believe.
Mm-hmm.
Five years ago, six years ago?
Yes, the middle school renovation numbers were correct.
Right, but they would be higher now.
They would be higher now. I, I mean, I would suspect, I'm not a builder or a construction person, but.
I do, and I, I don't want to keep beating this drum, but I, I do want to, the language that's in the 13 million, it says all aspects of the building. So, I'm, and it's called modernization plan. So, I'm assuming that they're going to be taken care of to get it to a point where it's highly functioning. And as I remember the presentation back then, that was presented to us. But I do agree that the number's not going to be 13.9. It's going to be, construction costs are higher now and, yeah, 16 or 15 and a half, 16.
Dr. Parrish, can we take that slide and just tear that out and give to somebody and say, what's this cost today? Is that possible for our next meeting? Can we find out what that 13.9 looks like in this year?
I, I can see if I can find out the, the firm that did the work from us, for us. I guess I could see if they, if they could, they may be able to use some multiplier and give us an estimate. So, I could, yeah, we can find that out.
Can I ask a question? And board members had really good questions about what happens 10 years from now if the numbers, if we decide not to consolidate and if we try to move forward with the modernization of the middle school. And I probably should know this by looking at these numbers, but I want to hear you say it. What is our capacity in 2026 if Weldon Cooper numbers hold? What additional capacity would we have if we continue to grow?
I'd have to crunch those numbers for you because we didn't do that. So, I'd have to take, put the Cooper numbers for 10 years by grade, I should have thought to do that, I'm sorry. But by grade span, I can, we can calculate that for you. Let us, we'll do that for you, yeah.
That, to me, is the driving decision behind what we're talking about.
Are you saying that if we believe the Weldon Cooper numbers, I think I agree with you, we go to get middle school, go straight and keep it as it is? And then, if we don't, we go the other way? That's what I'm thinking. It's just a broad brush overview.
Well, what, and maybe this is what you just said, but I'm a little slow. What I asked was if the Weldon Cooper numbers hold and then in 2026, we continue to grow, what would be our capacity with the four schools that we currently have with the middle school, spending the money modernizing? Because the last thing I want is in 2026 for us to not have any options if the numbers continue to grow and then we have to build another school. And when I say us, I mean whoever's sitting in these seats, but I don't want to deal them a bad hand either.
You'll be back, Steve. You'll be back. We know that.
So, what you're asking is to create a new column on this capacity spreadsheet so that our enrollment would be the enrollment that's projected out by Weldon Cooper for 10 years from now. That's what we, we need to do and then you can compare it.
And school capacity.
Knowing capacity could change because programs and electives and that sort of thing can change, but it will give you some idea.
Give or take one or two, we'll let you slide.
Yeah, yeah. Sorry, I didn't think about it ahead of time.
This may be too simplistic, but it seems to me that if we believe Weldon Cooper, we kind of got to keep four schools and fix the middle school. If we don't believe Weldon Cooper and we go the three-school route, we're spending 20 million anyway, and then 10 years, we need to spend 20 million more to build middle school again. Is that too simplistic of you?
It's exactly what I was thinking.
Makes sense to me.
I think the question that, that occurs to me is if we put a modernization on the middle school but don't actually rebuild it, do we have an old building, a 10-year older building at that point? Whereas if we built, if we use the scenario where we're building on to the elementary school, we have a 50-year plan and we have a building that is new and will carry us out much further. That's my only thought about the, the quote-unquote "modernization" short of really fixing the major problems.
Well, the, we could ask, since we're going to go back and ask about cost increases, try and, and I, it could be that it's, there is a very thick document about the study. It could be they have some length of time projections associated with the costs, I just don't remember. But if not, we could ask them to see what, we can, I can try and see if we can get that I just don't remember. But if not, we could ask them to see what we can, I can try and see if we can get that for you. What, you know, by doing the modernization, how many more years are we getting out of the systems and the building? Because a lot of school divisions do this. You know, they take their older buildings and do modernizations. I've experienced it in my career in another locality. Dr. Fox, the same experience. So, but yes, we could get that for you to give a sense of, you know, longevity of the systems, the building.
Because looking at the reconstruction plan, it says that that will demolish the section dating 1932 to 1949. So it's two parts. What what is the age of the other part of the building? So let's just say they took that part down, like she said. What's the age on the part of the building?
It's 50s to present, right? 1950s to present or it lasts, yeah. And see, I look and I'm looking at Crushier. We're 22.8 million for the partial raz and rebuild and 27 for the total, and those are 2012 numbers.
I'm like you, if you're going to spend that much money, I would rather, I mean, it's over 50-year and having to keep revisiting this every five to 10 years.
I think the cost for that was like 22 million, which would be higher. So just keeping that in mind with the other information.
Does that, the 13.9 million renovation, does that address the areas that flood on an increasingly uncomfortable?
I think so. I know the tech ed room being fixed was part of it. I think the auditorium.
The auditorium, the gym.
I don't know if it was moving up the whole gym, though. I think it may have included some work in the locker rooms.
Because if we were going to do that, that would be something we would really need to think about. One of the things that's appealing about the elementary school is that it's designed to be above the flood level.
If we come back to next week and you tell the city we need 27 million, what happens? We've decided we need 27 million to fix this problem. Then what happens?
It would have to, it would end up having to go out for a referendum.
Okay, so there's a.
I believe, which then City Council would have to.
Because that would just be our request. That would not include police, fire, everything else.
And arrest of ours. That wouldn't include the two roofs and.
Exactly.
I mean, there are other things on there for the future, right? Yes.
Like, I believe they also have the prerogative to say, oh, try again.
Right.
Which goes back to my first point. It's kind of hard to make a decision if we city plans to do and needs to do. You know, obviously, schools, what we're discussing, but there's there's other needs in the city that I'm sure they're a priority as well.
Well, I I my advice to you is we know that all the departments are going to produce their priorities, and the city is going to get that. The city's not going to finalize their CIP until they've got information from you all, because we're such a big player in the CIP, and they are being very supportive. But I would say to you, every department in the city has priorities. They're going to list their top two. You know, some of them range up to millions, some of them in the hundreds of thousands. So we know that to be a fact. So but they won't finalize that CIP till you're done. But I what I think by them doing the work now, it's actually helpful to you all, because you get a sense of, we know there's some needs, they're prioritizing needs. We know the 23 million. Like, them getting that information when they did is helpful, because if you had seen this and we thought, well, they could do 30 million, so 22 million looks good. And then you found out in January, you know, so it's been helpful that they're sort of side-by-side with you as you're giving that information. So they're not going to finish their work, but you'll certainly know what each department's top two priorities are, you know, after their, you can watch their Monday meeting on TV. And I can, I'll certainly be able to, I can't be at that meeting, but I can certainly get that information to you after the meeting's done. So that'll help you get a sense of what what their other priorities were. But they won't make a firm decision on that, you know, because they're honoring, you know, our work as a school division too, which I appreciate.
I'm certainly glad you told us that the 23 includes other projects that the the city needs to do, because my understanding was that the 23 was devoted to the school system. So thank you for the.
What they hope to be able to do, yeah.
Yeah, thanks for the clarification.
And I think a lot of people don't realize we're going to spend several million anyway on the middle school not doing anything, just based on other things that need to happen to the middle school that was already in the CIP over the next 10 years.
Yeah, you have like the roof on the middle school was there, but we haven't cost all the different parts of the middle school out because why do that if you're going to just say that it is a large project or if it goes out of service? But yes, it's just been sitting there as a block. But I think there was a roof cost on there at one point.
Mr. Cass, do we have a timeline where we have to make a decision? Is it January, or we have two more meetings basically, or? Here's what I'm, here's what I'm saying. I'm stuck tonight on 13.9. What's the real number? Because that would make a difference to me, how I think. And also, the, I guess, the how how good are the Weldon Cooper numbers? And can we get, I don't know, information how they got those numbers? How believable are they? It's if that's true, it's a different discussion. I think what Vice Chair said is true. It's a different discussion 10 years out.
So it sounds, to answer your question, we do have a couple of meetings.
Okay.
It's November, December, I believe.
Yeah, November 28th, and we moved that one to after Thanksgiving.
And then December 25th.
And we can add a work, we could, if you decide at some point you need to, we can add a work session in on another night if you need it. I don't know that you will.
I just don't know if we had time to get that information, because then I would, my small brain would be better able to handle what I'm recommending.
The two questions and additional information, I believe I heard you say is I don't know how to check on the credibility of Weldon Cooper, except based upon their experience, they've been really good and accurate, and they are the recognized expert. So I guess we could get some.
I could probably get, ask them to maybe send us the formulas they use. I mean, it's probably going to be very statistically oriented, but I can try and get a little bit more explanation from him.
Well, the 2002 number that they projected, that the student lost, it was off by 20-something, 30-something. I mean, to me, it was pretty close to what they projected that we would lose.
That's a great point, Jennifer. We could actually look at what they've projected for our school system each year.
Yeah, and and they, we've actually, I think, on several occasions, had more students than the, actually, we have. Since I've been here, I think since I've been here, we've had more students enroll than their projections. So they've actually under-projected a little bit since I've been here. So, yeah, we could go back, and I can do that.
Well, it's just that one slide has changed my whole perspective on this almost entirely.
Then the second thing, Wayne, is the 13.9 million dollar number.
Yeah.
The I guess what I'm hearing is additional information we would like to have is what those dollars would be today.
Day, yeah.
Right.
And then if we have those two pieces of information, anything else that we've added to that?
Something else that we wanted from the middle school one.
After the 13.9 million, is there anything in the next five to 10 years, anything that we would have to spend a lot? At burnt, fix everything outside of the locker room.
And how long will that last for?
Right, right. So if we spend 13.9 million and then five more years, we have to spend seven, eight million. I'm just curious. Put a Band-Aid on it.
Well, I think that probably by looking at the facility study that was done in 13, that really, while we know the costs will likely be higher, you can still get a sense of what they all, of what they placed in the tiers. So I can make sure you have the most detailed. I think there's actually a PowerPoint that might be slightly more detailed than the one you have that I can get to you, so you can look at it. And we have the whole book we can get to you too. But I think that would probably help you, because you haven't, you, those of you who are new on the board, you haven't dug into the facility study, because we haven't been to the point where we could even talk about it. So I think it's digging back into that. And I could, at the next meeting, do a little bit more of a presentation about the middle school facility study. I just had, you know, there hasn't been a meeting.
I'm interested. I know what it includes, but what does it not include?
Oh, all right.
You know, what what other challenges or issues would you would not be covered under the modernization, modernization plan? And, you know, 13 million now, but five more years from now, something that we didn't cover in this.
I I think.
Go on, try to say.
I I know what you're saying, but I think once you see the longer version of that 13.9, which I personally think would be more like 16 today, you know, Chairman Cass and I had the advantage of being here to see all of that. So I think once you see that, it's going to calm some of your concerns, I believe. That's just from my recollection of that information.
And probably by digging into option four, we can see what's in option four that's not in option three. And then we you get, we'll be able to give you a better sense of what might come next if we do three. What in four would be something 10 years later we'd have to do. I think that would probably help. And the other question, by the way, that we did get that we're going to look is longevity, like, you know, if we did modernization, how much longevity do we get out of those things? I knew there was another one.
And and the information on capacity.
And the information on capacity, applying Weldon Cooper's numbers, yes.
Okay. So anybody, any other, can some of that be sent to us in the the meantime, so we can look at?
Yeah, the capacity one will be easy. We can calculate that one. The getting more information about the middle school, we're going to have to talk to the folks that did that study, so that'll take a little bit longer.
I can't speak for everybody, but it seems like every meeting I keep thinking closer and closer to a decision, and I find myself stepping back further and further. So, you know.
It's a process.
Especially with surprises.
That's true.
But it's got better tonight in that we know the budget or something of the city's budget. And then, again, the Weldon Cooper numbers have changed my perspective a little bit too.
Hey, can we put a bow on it for tonight? And this information, Dr. Parrish, thank you. Great job.
You're welcome. And now we have one more short presentation for you.
I heard short.
No, I think, I think we're, I think we're done.